All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Charles Howard and I am your Rinta Chairman tonight. Our regular Chairman Drew Chaplin is home with a stomach virus, one of the three viruses around town. So I hope all of us are fortunate enough to wake up in the next few days feeling normal and not catching anything while we're here. I wanted to thank the Commissioners for being here. I want to thank the audience for being here. We do, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. I would remind you, we've got a full agenda tonight. I would remind you that we will have time for interaction. If we do, we will call upon you to come up and speak and of course, give your name. But if you would, we will limit comments to about two minutes. But please, please wait to be recognized before anyone starts to speak. But before we go in into the agenda tonight, I would like to call on Mr. Moses to give the invocation and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Glad that everyone is here today. Always remember, let's pray for one another because we don't know when it beats ours. Good evening, well, thank you for this time here tonight, wish you the best. Thank you for what we can do to benefit the city of Clives. Hope we do in dignity and respect for all decisions here in Florence County. These are the persons that's here today. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's jump right into the agenda, Jerry. I think you'll lead us off here. Do you?
Oh, excuse me, we're skipping the minutes.
Yep. Getting ahead of myself. We do have the minutes. The minutes were sent to the Commissioners previously. If there are no additions or deletions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then the minutes are approved. Now Jerry, we'll call on you. You want to start?
Sure.
Do we go into the first case or do you want to talk about the first case?
Well, I can talk about the first case. The first item on the agenda was the request to approve the renaming of the park at, which is Northwest Park. This was deferred at the last Planning Commission meeting. However, City Council did hold their regular meeting yesterday and they chose to go ahead and proceed with voting on that in a resolution form. And they proceeded with naming it the Mordecai C Johnson Park to that renaming. So because I don't have the ability to remove it from the agenda, Planning Commission would need to remove that item from the agenda since it was deferred.
Okay. So that's already been handled?
It did. It got handled at City Council yesterday.
Okay. Can I get a motion then to delete item number four, PC 2024-31 from the agenda?
I'll make a motion to remove it.
Motion to move. Is there a second?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. So it's already decided by City Council, no matter, no matter what happens, this is done?
That's right. It got voted on yesterday by City Council. It is a policy and not an ordinance, so it was not a law. So they, you know, they went ahead and proceeded with that.
All right. I guess I'll second because nothing we can do. Do we have any discuss? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm stuck.
No, that's fine. Is there any? We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote then. All those in favor of removing item number four from the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. That's, four is removed. So we will go into item number five, PC-2025-01, Request for Sketch Plan Review of the Retreat at Oakdale Subdivision located on Meadows Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 0002-01-049. Ms. Lane?
Good evening. This is a standard sketch plan review. The property is already in the city limits and appropriately zoned. As you can see, it is out in the area known as Oakdale off of Lake Oakdale Drive and the, just due north of it is a subdivision called Summit at Oakdale. So this is kind of an extension of it, but because it is not, there's no physical connection between the two, it is being called Retreat at Oakdale. It consists of about 35 acres and 109 parcels. And it is being developed as a cluster style development, which means the lots will be around 6,000 square feet in size and will leave 35% of it as open space. So it meets all the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance for a cluster development in the RG2. So staff recommends, or states that it does, is in compliance with the UDO.
Okay.
So that concludes staff's report.
All right. Any questions from the Commissioners' staff?
Yeah, well, I got one question. He held with the fires to hear, make something flat, Eli. When we build all these houses clustered, you say clustered, that's where it's huge. Are they putting fire extensions so many speaking ways from the house or what kind of, are they prepared over there?
Yeah, we, we do require fire hydrants to be within a certain amount of feet of homes along streets and the Fire Marshal approves all of these plans. He looks, especially in the Development Plan Review, he'll look at the location of fire hydrants as well as how a fire truck can maneuver throughout the neighborhood. And also in building construction, they'll ensure that all fire codes and approved distances and/or firewalls are in place between structures as well.
Can I answer your question, Mr. Moses? Okay. All right. As this is a sketch plan, there is no public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion if there are no further questions.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
In a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That sketch plan is approved. All right. Item number six, PC-2025-03, Request to Zone NC-15 Pending Annexation. The lots located at 924, 928, and 932 Barclay Drive, identified as Florence County Tax Map Ms. Lane, we'll turn it over to you.
All right. These are three parcels located at the very back of Vintage Place subdivision. Vintage Place is not in the city limits, it's in the county. And until recently, it did not share any contiguity with the city either. However, the very back of it is now contiguous with the Magnolia Farms subdivision off of Hoffmeyer Road. And so the property owner of those three parcels has requested annexation. Here's a close-up look to it. The three parcels do not actually even meet the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance for the requested zoning, which would be NC-15, which allows single-family detached housing on large parcels only. But these three lots are not wide enough at the building line. The NC-15 requires 100-foot width at the building line. Again, it's up against the RG3, which is a more dense zoning designation for Magnolia Farms behind it. And the Future Land Use Map does call for it to be neighborhood conservation. So if it was annexed, it would be an appropriate zoning designation for that. But here are some pictures of it and that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any questions from the Commissioners?
Yes. How are these lots differ than the county lots that are there? And Vintage Place has been there a long time. So how are these lots going to differ in any way, shape, or form than the lots that are there currently?
I don't know because I'm not familiar with the size requirements for Vintage Place.
Well, they look smaller.
They do look smaller to me.
Right. They look smaller. Setbacks are different?
I believe they are. I'm sure the HOA has a different set than even the county would.
So essentially, this is going to be Vintage Place lots. I mean, this is...
Yes. Yeah, they would not be part of any, they're not leaving that subdivision. They would still be part of that subdivision.
And those were the original three parcels of way of survey?
I doubt it. I think it's been recently subdivided.
Okay.
And I have received a number of emails from residents of Vintage Place who pointed out that back in 2016, they were approached about annexing and they all were unanimously against it.
Annexing into the city.
Into the city.
Yeah, back in, back in 2016, there was an effort by some community members to accomplish what we call a 75% annexation whereby 75% of the residents would petition to annex and the other 25% in the defined geographic area would come into the city. So it was an attempt to bring the entirety of Vintage Place in. But the community was never successful in getting the full 75% and they ended up dropping the issue. So that's just a little bit of history there on the annexation in Vintage Place. And you know, and just as an update, you know, it's Planning Commission's job to determine the zoning as it moves forward to City Council, but City Council ultimately decides upon the zoning and whether to annex into the city. And the city and our report to City Council, you know, report on the feasibility of doing so. And you know, we've, we circulate to each department, you know, a kind of a checklist in effort to solicit and we talk about it in our meetings about any issues with it. And this particular annexation appears like it might go forward to council with some, with some underlying issues associated with it that we'll report to council.
What are those issues?
Well, for one, I know the roads in Vintage Place have some issues with them. And our, you know, for one, it would be inefficient for our sanitation trucks to go all the way to the back of that neighborhood just to pick up three cans at the back, not to mention the further road damage that could potentially occur from our equipment going in there, as well as, you know, public safety, our fire department and police department, although they, you know, they do often respond to Vintage Place, that, but it would not be an efficiency or an efficient service that we could provide. So we, we look at our ability to provide services, efficient services in those areas. And those are the main problems.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Okay, then we'll open up a public hearing. First, we'll start, start with those who are in favor, would like to speak in favor of this, this item. If you wish to speak, if you would, please raise your hand. Okay. Having seen no hands, is there anyone who would wish to speak in opposition? You sir, would you please come to the podium and state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Jeremy McKee. I am the President of the Vintage Place Homeowners Association Board. One clarification for, that was a question was asked, those are the original plot plans for that. That's in our current plot plan for Vintage Place. Those have not been separated or changed at all. But it is the position that Vintage Place Homeowners Association would request that our subdivision remains consistent with all homes being maintained as a county property. We believe that it is logical, not logical, for having a few homes in the very back of our neighborhood that would be annexed into the city limits while the rest of the subdivision remains county property. This could potentially cause confusion, as your staff stated earlier, with the fire department, sanitation, law enforcement as well. And then Windsor Forest subdivision is an example of some of the other areas in the city that the city and county properties are intermixed and we'd like to stay away from that.
Okay. All right. Is that it? Any questions the Commissioners have of Mr. McKee?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
I have one other question.
Sure.
So why the, why the annexation? Why, why, there's a reason they want to get into the city. So what, what's the reason, Jerry?
Well, as most people put on the form, they put city services. But I believe it may also stem from some reduction in water sewer tap fees as well in this case. So, yeah.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion from the Commissioners. Motion to deny. Okay.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Mr. Moses made a motion to deny.
And who seconded?
We haven't had yet a second.
Second.
And a second. Any, any discussion? Call for the vote then. All those in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The motion, the item is denied. All right. Moving right along, we'll go to item number seven, PC-2025-04, Request to Zone Commercial General Pending Annexation. The lot located at the intersection of Gilbert Drive and Freedom Boulevard, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 00178-01-244. Ms. Lane?
All right. This may look a little bit familiar to you. This is part of the parcel that was annexed a couple of years ago and has been developed into Freedom Estates subdivision. And at that time, the property at the intersection of Gilbert Drive and Freedom Boulevard was set aside and zoned commercial. And the very tip of it was actually part of the parcel across the street. So it was not included in the annexation and zoning at that time. So the owners of the remaining property in Freedom Estates have since purchased that property and now just want to annex it and zone it commercial general, which is in keeping with the way it is right now. So as you can see, the, when they annexed that whole portion in, the majority of it was zoned RG3 for the subdivision, but they liked, wanted to preserve the corner as commercial to build some supportive services or something there. The intent, I believe, was to provide something that could then serve the residential use. So that's what they're doing now, just kind of finishing up that whole parcel. And so they just wanted to annex it, they'll join it onto that partial, portion that's already there and then zone it commercial general.
It's not zoned commercial general currently. I thought I heard you say it was.
Well, the part next to it is, as you see, the zoning here, the part in the red is the part that is not in the city.
Okay. I got you.
And then the Future Land Map, Land Use Map does have that whole area as general commercial as well.
Okay. All right. Any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the intended purpose of getting it rezoned? What do they plan to do with it?
I don't know, but as you can see by looking at it, there's, would be no purpose of zoning it residential. So that's just the logical zoning designation for it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, question. Is this the property, the one, the long fence, remember, on Freedom Boulevard? And I think about five or six months ago, they want us to approve a black fence, a long fence. This is not the same property?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Any other questions of staff? Okay. I'll open the floor for a public hearing again. We'll start with any, anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this request, please raise your hand. Is there anybody here who would wish to speak against this request? There's two, okay. If you in the inside position, if you would make your way to the front, state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nina Green. I'm actually a resident of Freedom Estates. We, as a community, because the HOA has not been released to us, so we do not have a board at this time, we communicate amongst ourselves and we do not want it to be a commercial property. We would prefer that it be something residential for us to be able to build there to add to the community, whether it be park, there's a lot of individuals that have children, a lot of older individuals that walk, run throughout the neighborhood. So if we could see something like that, it would be great. Also, another worry is fencing. I think we were under the impression that we would not be able to fence in our neighborhood because we've had a lot of negative traffic come through, a lot of individuals calling police officers out there for individuals getting into houses. We've had several instances where HVAC units stolen off of the side of the houses, which we know all of this will die down once construction is completed, but we can't guarantee that. So that's why we were wanting, but we've, like I said, we were told that it's a possibility that we couldn't get fencing because the way that it's zoned and that it doesn't belong to us. The property surrounding the neighborhood belongs to the individuals who own that one
Any, any questions?
I have a question. It's already, partly, one second. The corner lot that's open is beside a piece that's already general commercial, correct?
That's correct.
I mean, so adjacent to your property now currently, it's zoned general commercial.
Okay.
The four acres is already zoned general commercial.
Okay.
So how would keeping one acre, well, the way it is, prevent, I mean, because the four acres beside you from what I see is already zoned commercial.
Right. And like I said, none of us were aware that this was zoned commercial. We thought that this meeting was them trying to get that whole piece zoned as commercial. So we're all still kind of in the community learning about this piece of land specifically.
Yeah. So you didn't realize the bigger piece was already zoned commercial?
Correct. We didn't know that it's just the one corner of it. We thought that whole piece that was next to the neighborhood was, hadn't been, and that's what they're trying to get zoned. So that's why most of us were trying to come up with some kind of something because we, they did not want it to be a commercial property.
Right.
No one wanted, they don't want it to be a gas station or something of the sort that keeps lights on and traffic 24/7 coming through the neighborhood with all the negative foot traffic that we've already had.
Well, they, they have the ability to do just that right beside you. I'd almost rather have a gas station on a corner away from you if, if it were me. So you didn't know that four acres was already zoned, okay.
Did not, did not.
That makes sense.
Any other questions of Ms. Green? Thank you, Ms. Green.
Thank you.
There was someone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Council. My name is Brittany Snee. Like Nina, I think we were all under the impression that there was not already a commercial zoning in that, in that area. So I guess I just want to go on record by saying that as a resident of the Freedom Estates, we're hoping that there's a business that comes in that isn't going to have light pollution, that isn't going to add negativity to our wonderful community. We have a beautiful pond, we have a lot of kids that are out walking around, and a lot of people have been using our loop as their personal racetrack. And so like my son likes to ride his bike around that area. So it's just something that we're very concerned about and we're glad that you are listening to us and taking that under consideration.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys very much.
Are there any questions of Ms. Snee? Okay. Thank you, Snee. All right. At this point, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion amongst the Commissioners?
I'm making a motion to approve it. This, the four acres is already there, it would, it doesn't make sense not to do it.
Yeah, I agree. There's a motion to approve and a second, Mr. Moses. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So that, that request is approved.
And I would like to say, for the sake of y'all, any commercial development that is proposed there, there are buffer yard requirements, there are light pollution preventative measures that have to be taken by any applicant that would go in there. So the fact that it is directly abutting a residential area would definitely come into play for the requirements before we would approve it.
Thank you. I'm coming from Ohio. We moved here recently and my former city had a, a lot of big mining coming in and it was from a neighborhood that was right next to commercial and it was just a very big ordeal. So we're just making sure that there's a good decibel level and it's not going to deter the positivity and the wonderful community that we've already started.
Sure. Thank you. Understood. I will also say, I think it was mentioned earlier, but we are but a recommending body. City Council ultimately will, will make a decision on this. So you certainly have another opportunity to voice your concerns if you so wish. Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is number eight, PC 2025-05, Request to Zone RG2 Pending Annexation. The lots located at 1001 Turn Bridge Place and 3740 West Lake Drive, identified as Florence County Tax Map Numbers 00751-01-279 and 00751-01-282. Ms. Lane, you are busy tonight.
Yes, sir. It's because Derek is on a cruise.
We could have gone without hearing that.
All right. This is out in Oakdale and these are parcels that are part of a very old subdivision known as Greens Cape. Keep on saying Greenscape, but it's Greens Cape that was developed back in the 1980s and 90s. There are these two parcels, they're directly across the street from property that's in the city as well as the lake around it. So it has the contiguity. These parcels, because they were developed as part of a set subdivision, and we have not, we don't find any details on the subdivision, I would expect it was developed as a planned unit development because as you can see, and I'll show a little bit more, the houses have huge footprints and the parcels are very small. So the property owner purchased them and then was told by the county he could not build on them, that he would have to go by the setbacks that the county has for their general residential area. And we felt that in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, y'all have the authority to say that he can build it with the setbacks and footprint and that, that is in keeping with the character of the remainder of the development. So here's the zoning map. It is open space and recreation for the lake and then RG2 across the street, which is why we felt that was an appropriate designation for it. And the Future Land Use Map does call for them to be a neighborhood conservation, so. But this is the Greenscape Lot Layout and area of it. As you can see, the blue lines are the existing property lines and the houses are quite large and the setbacks are quite small. So he would like to mimic that on his parcel. We would do it at an average, a lot average of, on the setbacks and give that to him as his design standards. These are some site photos. The top two are the two parcels and then the bottom one is looking down one of those streets. And as you can see, the houses are right up to the road and they have small setbacks, but it does have a certain character to it. And I think putting a traditional house in the middle... the middle of that would kind of upset the character of the area as well. So we felt that that was appropriate, and so, and I haven't gotten a single phone call about this, and the neighbors were notified, so.
Okay.
So that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any questions of staff? All right, then we will open a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone wishing to oppose this item? Then we will close the public hearing, and I will open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
It's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to item nine. Review of the draft of the updated City of Florence downtown design standards for recommendation to City Council.
This is a little bit different.
Yes. Is this, these last two items, or does this involve the public?
Um, yes.
Okay. Okay. Good. Yeah, it's a public hearing. Good.
So the design standard, the city has had design guidelines which give the design standards for the seven overlay districts, historical overlay districts, and they dated back to 2008. So earlier this, in '24, we received a grant to update them, and so we spent the last seven or eight months working with a consultant, Bolton and Mank, to do so. And so they have come up with a draft of the ordinance. It provides staff and the design review board a little more flexibility, a little more clarity on what can be approved administratively and on what meeting the standards looks like. It incorporates newer materials that were not even in existence back in 2008. So there were two public workshops held introducing the standards, and they were also presented to the design review board back on December 11th, and they voted to approve them as well. But because it is formal, formally, an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, because it is referenced, as you can see at the bottom of the page there, the planning commission does need to approve it, and then it will go to City Council for their approval as well.
Okay. Any questions of staff?
Yes. How much, how much will staffing be able to, is this, let me make sure I ask this correctly. How much power does this give the staff to approve something without any input?
It's much clearer. There are tables in there that are very clear about what, and it's very clear that if the proposal meets the standards, then staff can approve it unequivocally. It's only if it does not meet the standards, or it's something a little bit unusual, then it would definitely go to the design review board. Or if someone says, no, I really think this meets the intent, even if it doesn't meet the specific description, then it would go to the design review board. But it gives the design review board as well as staff much clearer standards to go by than the old one did.
Clear standards, not interpretational standards.
Yeah. What it does is it defines minor projects and major projects, and it gives staff the ability to approve minor projects if they meet the very definition of the standards. If they're outside of that, or it's a major project, then it goes to the board. And as always, when staff's unsure, or, you know, a new technology or new materials are being proposed, or something outside the box, we like for it to go to the public hearing process.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, we will open it up for public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak in favor of this item? Is there anyone in attendance who would like to oppose this item? Okay. We'll close the public hearing, and I will open the floor for a motion.
I have a really disgusted look at real deeply, but I'm going to quote the design review board to say that, because I know they are really tough, and I know we need to be tough also. But I'm gonna go ahead and approve it for the time being.
Okay.
Until I see some of the projects they want here going.
Look, there is a motion on the floor to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second, but also, Mr. Moses, I agree with you. That's why I asked about interpretation or stuff like that. The design review board is tough, so that's the right thing to do. Sometimes you have a penny holding up a dollar with staff. Sometimes it has more knowledge than anybody about what meets the standard. So anyway, a second.
Great points. We have a motion and a second to approve. A call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. And then we are, last but not least, item number 10. Request to amend the flood hazard districts to maintain compliance with current FEMA regulations and adopt the revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps.
Thank you, Chairman. Every 10 years or so, FEMA develops new floodplain maps for various areas. Florence County maps were released, the preliminary maps were released in 2022 to the city and the county. And the city, we reviewed, you know, within our boundaries, and there were no significant changes. It wasn't a real deep level study at this time that FEMA conducted. They did incorporate any map amendments. Individual property owners, as they develop, can apply for what's called a letter of map amendment. They might fill a piece of property that's permitted to do so in the fringe of the floodplain or survey the property and actually remove, because it was inadvertently put in the floodplain. All of those map amendments that went through FEMA and were approved were incorporated into this map. So those were all property owner-driven and very minor, you know, edges of lots and fringes. So they incorporated all of those in the actual drawn maps this time. And the only major change on the fringe of the city was in, up off of Alligator Road, right behind Alligator West. They actually defined that floodplain in that area. It was just before, it didn't delineate between a floodplain and a floodway, and all that's been defined now. That is just outside city limits, so it doesn't fall under our regulation, but it does, it's immediately adjacent. So we were worried if it changed any, it would come into our jurisdiction, but it did not in that instance. So there's really no significant changes to the actual maps themselves. But it did go back in, you know, when the preliminary maps were released, there were public meetings held in conjunction with the State Floodplain Office at various places around the county. Myself and Eddie Weaver, who are both floodplain coordinators for the city, attended and helped the state with those and talked to residents about what it meant and what the changes were for their areas. And then after that, there's then a period of appeal that FEMA requires, and FEMA and the State Floodplain Office coordinate that. No appeals were received within the City of Florence and our jurisdiction, because, like I said, the changes were very minuscule. But we do have the new maps, the new base flood elevations, all the technical paperwork that accompanies that. The maps are dated March 25th, 2025, which is the date we have to have them adopted by. And in doing so, we also have to update our floodplain ordinance to include any changes that FEMA has required during that 10 years. We did do significant changes to our ordinance 10 years ago. Our code was so far behind that it took major revisions. This time around, we've kept up through the years with a few revisions here and there, and the changes are very minor, and I'll go through those real quick. The first one is in our repair and buffer section, and it's only the reference to the floodplain maps. In that section of code, we reference the maps from 2014, which are the current ones that are in place, and we reference the date of the new maps to bring that up to code. And then in the actual floodplain or flood hazard section of the code, we did the same thing, where we referenced the flood insurance study dated March 25th, 2025, and that references the new maps that will be in place. One other change, under general standards in our floodplain ordinance, there's a whole list of items that goes A through K, I believe, or, you know, it's a whole list of items. There was one that was missing from our list, and it's this first one, where we added reasonably safe from flooding. Review all permit applications to determine whether proposed building sites will be reasonably safe from flooding. FEMA just wants us to put that in there so that, you know, staff will make every effort, you know, when someone tries to build in the floodplain, to try to, you know, persuade them to build somewhere else. You know, there's regulations where, you know, in the floodplain that prohibit them from building, but some of the fringe areas they can build, and they just want us to make every reasonable effort that they're safe from flooding in these areas. So that was some language that was not in our code that they wanted us to add. And also, we were missing a definition related to the floodplain, and it's new manufactured home park or subdivision. And it's a manufactured home park or subdivision for which the construction of facilities for servicing the lots on which the manufactured home are to be affixed, including at a minimum the installation of utilities, the construction of streets, and either final site grading or the pouring of concrete slab is completed on or after December 1st, 1981. And you probably say, well, what does that 1981 date have to do with anything? That's the date that what we call prefirm and postfirm, it's the flood insurance rate maps. The original flood insurance rate maps came out in 1981 and were adopted by the city. So, you know, structures built before that potentially follow a different regulation and requirements than those constructed after that. So that's a definition that they required us to put in there. And I argued with FEMA a bit, because we don't, this doesn't apply in our city. I couldn't think of a single location where this definition would apply. But in an effort to preserve our floodplain policies for our residents within the city, I told them we would include this.
Any questions?
Yes.
Of staff?
Sorry. Squeaky wheel and that, guys. So did anything change from second loop down to third loop and over to the mill pond? Any, other than the riparian borders for maybe Jeffries Creek, anything like that?
No. The area, the Gully Branch area, it was not, it's not defined as a floodway in the fringe flood area. During the process, the engineers that were conducting that, I asked them if that was in the plans to do that, and they said no. There was no funding from FEMA to do a full flood study in that area. So, but I did put in a request that they bring that up during the next phase there. Yeah. So, and I can keep on that. I mean, I have, I've been with the floodplain coordinator, and I'm getting some network connections. So hopefully, we can, I can push that to be delineated next time.
I want to ask a question. They say flood. This all over Florence flood, or just certain areas?
This is only the regulated floodplain, which is mainly along our streams and tributaries. This would be the regulated floodway of Jeffries Creek, you know, Alligator, you know, Alligator Swamp, Mill Pond, those areas, Middle Swamp, those areas. And so a little bit of Black Creek is inside the city limits. Yeah. But it's not, it's not our, it's not what you consider nuisance stormwater flooding. That is, that's different. This is only the regulated floodway. Yeah. And it essentially regulates, you know, a lot of times when you go down to the beach and you see the houses up on stilts, you know, that's not because they want to many times, it's because they're required to, yeah, to get up above that base flood elevation.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do have a question. So for A, where it says review all permit applications to determine proposed building sites, would that be, is there a way we could reword that, or is that verbiage given from FEMA?
Where is it now?
A, number one, A, under the general standards?
The review all permits to determine, oh, yeah. That's the exact language I was given from FEMA. Yeah.
So do we have to go with that verbiage?
We do.
Okay.
If you want insurance.
Yeah. Yes.
They write the rules to the game. Any other questions? Okay. We'll open the matter up for public hearing. Is there anyone willing to speak on behalf in favor of this item? Is there anyone willing to speak in opposition of this item? All right. We'll close the public hearing and call for a vote. Excuse me. It's called for a motion. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It is approved.
And, can I add one more thing?
Absolutely.
Xavier, this would only apply to permits issued in the floodplain, not every permit in the city. So, yeah.
I was only asking because maybe you could do like a certain type of bill versus...
Yeah. Only buildings that are inside the regulated floodplain, which inside the city is very few. So, yeah.
According to my agenda, we are done. Is there something here that I'm missing? We still have an audience, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Got a motion to adjourn, then thank everyone for being here. Have a great night.